All right. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt.
I'll say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us your strength and our strength bless us. And we give you grace to change our places. And we give you nothing but salvation. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roco.
Mayor Pro Tim, Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marquardt.
Here.
Councilmember Marlin Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Yeah.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Item one, public comment.
There's none.
No comment cards. At this time, I'll ask you to put your phone on vibrate and we'll move on to item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of January 18th, 2022, which will publish on February 2nd, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and a second, I think that was Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
All right. Do we have any discussion on our minutes of February 2nd? Hearing seen nuns, please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, item three.
Mr. Cedric Floyd, President of Data Center LLC, to address the council on redistricting.
Hello. Thank you.
Hello, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. You almost got it done?
The fan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we didn't have. We did serve some stuff together.
This meeting's kind of quiet. Somebody lobbing it up.
Enjoy it while you can.
I have the most people.
I'm at a church.
I know.
Almost, almost.
This is interesting.
The second most.
Yes, ma'am.
Brooke, beat me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm inspired.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening, sir.
City council members and other elected and appointed officials. With 40 years of providing redistricting services in the state, my company Data Center is the most experienced redistricting company in the state. I'm Cedric Floyd, President and Chief Demographer, and I've been doing redistricting since 1981. It's a pleasure for Data Center to perform redistricting services for your city council. The 2020 census has been released. The city of New Iberia has a population of 28,555, down from 30,617 with the 2010 census, reflecting a population loss of 2,062 or 6.73 percent. Consistent with state law revised statute 33:1371, the population, the 2020 census population has been applied to your six districts. That is called the Benchmark Plan, the starting point for redistricting. The Benchmark Plan shows that your sixth district has a deviation of 26.56 percent. How you calculate the deviation? By taking your city population and dividing it into six, which is your ideal district size of 4,759. Then you subtract your highest district from your smallest district, which is that's District One with 5,308, subtracting from your smallest district, which is District Two, of 4,044. That is a difference of 1,0264. Then you divide 1,0264 into your ideal district size, and that gives you 26.56 percent. The goal for redistricting is having six districts within 10 percent deviation. And yours is double that amount. And that's federal law in terms of having one person, one vote. After seeing that your lines are a malapportion, they call it, over 10 percent, you must redistrict. And before you is, I'll chart, this is applying the 2020 census to your six districts. Now that you have the redistrict, the next page is standard criteria for redistricting. The first is population equality. I just talked to you about having a 10 percent deviation between the largest district and the smallest district. Compliance with the Voting Rights Act. You already have a plan that was approved by the Justice Department 10 years ago, so this is the standard criteria that you're already building on that foundation. But I wanted to go through each one. Each district shall be compact, one city, no problem. Contiguous, that means a solid area, not going from, while skipping part of a district and go to another district. Incumbencies shall be considered. Number six, consideration shall be given to natural, geographical, and political boundaries. All we're going to do in this process is do as least changes as possible to get within 10 percent deviation, at least changes as possible. That's what we want to do. Number seven, consideration shall be given to keep intact communities with established ties of common interest and association, whether historical, racial, economic, ethnic, religious, or other. Like I said, you already have a solid plan, and we're going to try to do as least changes as possible to come within that 10 percent. This plan will not come into effect to qualifying for your next four-year term in office. So the plan that you have now is in effect all the way to qualifying, and your primary election would be November 5th, 2024. The next third sheet of paper, I call it the Redistricting Resolution. I want you to look at it and consider passing it at your next meeting. It's just stating about population equality, and I'll read it to put it into the record that I'm recommending that this city council pass this resolution. Whereas the 2020 U.S. Census count has been completed in PL 94:171, redistricting data was delivered to the state of Louisiana in August 2021. Whereas the New Iberia City Council, under Louisiana Revised Statute 33:1371, must make a determination, which I've done for you, whether redistricting is necessary with the 2020 U.S. Census population. And whereas the New Iberia City Council districts authorize a study to calculate the 2020 U.S. Census population in each city council district, and that's on your front page and on this page. Whereas the city council district has the following population, just talked to you about that. Whereas the overall deviation of the six city council districts is 26.56, which is more than double, and the limit is, the legal limit is 10 percent. Now therefore, be it resolved that the New Iberia City Council hereby declares that a redistricting of the city council district must commence to adjust the district population to be within 10 percent deviation of the ideal district size. Be it finally resolved that this resolution will become effective immediately upon adoption by the New Iberia City Council. Just standard, all you're saying that you acknowledge your census count, and we're going to redistrict because I could just tell you, I did it for five different cities. If you don't do it, the Secretary of State will not let you qualify for office. You know, you must do it six weeks before qualifying, and we've got some time on the clock, but I wanted to go through all that with you. As I was saying, my company's been doing this since our fifth census. Bring my redistricting computer, set up to your monitor, or bring a monitor, and we will go either individually or workshop group, and we adjust the districts, like I say, to be as least changed as possible to comply with 10 percent. Like I say, I look forward to working with you, each one of you, individually or in groups, and I'll take any questions or concerns that you may have now.
Good. Any questions? Comments?
I'm going to comment.
Yes, sir.
I think, and appreciate the information, it's very interesting, intriguing. As you know, our parish has, I mean, our city has shrunk a little bit, but I would prefer a group session. That way, we can see where the lines move. I think individually, when we start moving lines, I'd rather see the council, you know? Council C as a group.
No, no, no problem. However you want to do it, I'd be more than happy to. Some people, sometime, a council member want to see four or five moves or so, and take it back and say, hey, that wasn't a good idea. But like I said, at the end of the day, I look for a unanimous vote, and for all we're doing is least changes as possible to come within your 10 percent.
I can ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so how do we prep for this? Should we be going out, looking at our districts, seeing which lines could potentially move? You know, how do we prep to be prepared? So we come to that meeting, we're ready to kind of have this conversation and make sure that we're doing the best thing for our community?
You know, the first thing, you really don't have to do anything right now. Come and put the map up on the screen, and I have it by census block by block, and it's going to tell you the demographics there. And from now, you'll know exactly, you know, we have two districts within range, District Three and Six. We have two districts above range, One and Eight, and we have two districts below the range, Two and Five. So like I said, that you'll have time, you know, we've got time on the clock to, you know, get the information, study the information, and if it takes two, three, four, five workshop meetings, or 10, we're going to do what it takes until everybody understands what you have to do. And like I said, it's going to be a unanimous vote because everybody's going to know transparency, and this got to take place so you can have city council elections. But yeah, you don't have to do anything. I'll have the map with each, with the six city council districts, and the block information there, and live and in color, we're going to move a block or move a census block, and you will know the result of the change instantly.
So we would be able to see the demographics, like the makeup, the racial makeup of that group?
Yes.
Okay.
Instantly, if you put a block in or take a block out, instantly you will know what the result of.
Okay.
He sold me on two things. He said, I won't quit till you have a unanimous vote, and I'll only move the minimum. I was like, you are hard. Anyway, I'm sorry. Anybody, okay, anybody else had a question? I'll come back to you.
That's fine.
Yes, sir.
And I know again, we've.
Councilman Lewis.
We've got a lot of time before we get this done.
Yes.
But from what I understand, the disparities in population per district, so some districts are going to lose populations without moving the line, well, without moving the lines much, so that other districts' population can come up, is what you're basically essentially saying?
100 percent. And sometimes if your districts within range need to domino to get to, you know, it's not all the time, the one that need is next to the one that.
Everybody contributes.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So you're not going to be probably that lucky that no district isn't going untouched. But it may be so, but it may be a domino effect, as least changes as possible, and you'll see it instantly in terms of what the population, and the blocks are not uniform. Sometimes it's two people, sometime it might be 125 people in the census block, and that's on the ground favor.
I see.
But Mr. Broussard? I'm going to let everybody speak once.
Okay.
I'm trying to get better.
I appreciate you coming, sir.
What's that?
Your knowledge is great news to us. We're not looking at a great change in any district.
Right.
Or some other places in parish. If you have the place that they have been troubles with, new people are moving things around.
Right.
But I thank you, sir, for coming in now ahead of time. Happy to work with you on this because you're.
As many times as necessary to get, to get everybody up to speed, exactly what needs to happen, and we're going to do them.
You're a savior coming out.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You're putting everything on the line right there.
Right. And I'm with my wife, Rose of 38 years.
Yes, she came last.
And she's from, let me just tell you, she's from Cecilia Brobridge. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else wants to speak that hadn't spoke yet? Councilwoman Marquardt.
When do we start meeting to adjust the lines?
Well, let me tell you, this is February the first. Maybe we start meeting at March or April.
Okay.
Give you some time to do it.
For that soon.
And Ms. Erin helped me set it up, and we'll meet right here, put up on a, on the screen. If not, I'll bring my own projector, and you'll see, block by block, exactly the demographics. This is according to the U.S. Census, so I'm not bringing one person in my back pocket. So this is what the census is saying. The blocks are in the people.
Okay.
Good. Good. Okay, DeeDee and then you.
My turn.
One at a time. Councilwoman.
It's funny because after with Mr. Broussard, I say, he's probably going to say, I can't believe she's asking this question, but number seven on your criteria for redistricting says, consideration should be given to keep intact communities with established ties of common interest and association. My district in particular, I see that there can be some improvements because I pretty much traversed the whole city. And so it's not necessarily where I have common interest and association in my district. I'm not sure how it was drawn. I'm a first-time councilperson, so I don't know what happened back in the past, but I might, I'd like to see some improvements there if possible, as we kind of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, you didn't speak at all yet. Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The questions for me are going to come when we see the maps.
Okay.
Because I know there's District One and District Six has been moved a few times, but, you know, in that street and Allen Street, and it's just kind of confusing.
Louisville Road, yeah, it's moved a few times.
So now that I, when I'm looking at your numbers, based on what I have on District Six and District One, I'm guessing to get to a, get closer to a 10 percent, those might, might move again, based on what we're seeing. So that's, my question's going to come when we see those lines move. So right now, I just appreciate you, what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman, I mean, Mayor Pro Tim Gonsalas. Councilman Floyd.
At large.
So just from my information person, if you're looking at this sheet, and let's just use number one as an example, is 11.454 deviance. To get within the tolerance of the federal government, we got to go below 10 in that deviance, so.
No, 5 percent. 5 percent up or 5 percent down equal 10 altogether.
10 below a 10 bound.
No, 5 up and 5 down equal 10 percent.
Okay, so, so we'd have to, in sheet, in that case, Brooks' district would have to lose 5 percent of the 549 to be within compliance.
Right. That's at the middle 549, but the high end is 4,997.
Okay.
That's the high end of 5, is 4,997.
Okay. That clarified my question.
Any other questions or comments?
I just got a comment that.
Sure.
This is great, this is great work, Mr. Floyd, and for me, and this is a lot of our first census, DeeDee. First sense, first for a lot of us up here, so you ain't on an island by yourself. This tells a story to me about our community, people moving out of some areas to move in other areas, people moving out of the community to, for whatever reason. But it tells a story about that, you know, some areas are better to live than others, and that tells a story. I'm going to just leave that right there.
All right. Well, if there's no further discussion, can't thank you enough for coming. Erin will get in touch to see the schedule of meeting. I personally like the idea of us all meeting at once and doing it on the big screen where we all can contribute, and you're going to find this council does like to contribute. It's going to be fun. I mean, I think it's going to be, I'm looking forward to it.
I look forward to it.
So thank you, and have a safe trip back, and we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
It'd be a big video game.
I should have bought a bigger TV.
Yeah. Fun to watch.
It will. All right. Madam Clerk, item 4A.
Public hearing on ordinance number 2022-02, amending contract for professional services with Bay Area Habits and Associates for City of New Iberia Streets Project.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Well, I had a bunch of them.
Always.
I don't know where they came from.
Brooke and Ms. Ledbetter.
No, that was me.
Oh, Ms. Dee, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're then Councilwoman Brooke, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Do we have any public comment on this item? We do.
Yes. Erin and I talked this afternoon about this. We're, we're trying to make sure that our contracts have non-appropriation clauses in them if we're going to be dealing with money that hadn't been appropriated yet. So I think we're going to, we would need to add one to this.
Okay.
So we talked about that this afternoon. Erin said, sure, we can put it in. So that'll be an additional paragraph.
Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none other, I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Councilwoman Marlin Lewis and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, 5A.
Ordinance is for adoption, ordinance number 2022-02, amending contract for professional services with Bay Area Habits and Associates for City of New Iberia Streets Project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt and a second, I think, by Councilman Dustin Swier. We have any discussion? And Jeff, can we just add that without?
Yeah.
Amending? We don't have to do a motion to amend? Okay, great.
We're just going to.
Then is there any discussion on this item?
So this is that, and we talked about, I think, the last meeting where we said that there was changes in supplies and stuff, so they have a much better estimate.
Yeah, we got, and changes in the dollar amount because we actually borrowed, when he originally started, we weren't sure how many millions we would obtain or how much we would spend at once.
Right.
So our price went up, and therefore I have to adjust his contract.
Okay. So I just want the public to understand why we're going from 8 million to 10 million.
Right. And it's because we borrowed more money, and we're still holding a little money in reserve to wait to see how our bids come in, because unfortunately, in the environment we're in, we had a bid today that went well over the money, and we're finding that with many of the bids we're taking lately, that costs have gone up. So it's good we decided to, you know, that was a wise decision to reserve some money.
So are we having any supply chain issues? Are we going to be dealing with any?
Yes. I mean, we do across the board. It might be.
For this project? The road project?
We could.
Okay.
We could. But we are on, you know, most of our projects have some issues at some point. It might be PVC pipe fittings, it might be, there's just been a variety of things that you never would. We're trying to buy the chairs for the front building for our new meeting center and have probably picked eight different styles of chair to find 40 chairs that match.
Mm-hmm.
You know, just, yeah, there are a lot of things lately that, we're just so used to clicking a button or, you know, going to Office Depot or whatever, but yeah, so you can expect some.
Yeah. Okay.
Anybody else? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk, 6A.
Resolution 22-18, appointing Abra Rayo to serve on the municipal fire and police civil service board to fill the unexpired term of O'Neill Jones.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. And we have Mr. Abra Rayo here, because our new requirement is when we put somebody on a board, we ask him to be here, so I actually remember. Is there any discussions or questions or anything?
He come up and introduce himself so we know who he is.
Sure. Come on up. And he has prior experience on this board. He's served on the police and fire board before, so I was very excited to get him back because he kind of knows the ropes.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Abra Rayo, and I'm a retired educator, and at 75, I'm back teaching in the classroom. There was a shortage over at Lordville High, so they called me, and so I feel it's very important, community service is very important, and this is an opportunity to do that. I have a lot of energy, and this helps me keep busy. And most of all, I believe that firemen and policemen need someone who will listen with an open mind and then apply the law as to whatever it is that they're objecting to. Any questions?
Questions, come.
Thank you.
No?
Thank you for your service.
Well.
Jeff has a question.
Jeff has a question.
No, I don't have a question. I just want to thank you.
Oh, definitely.
Oh, really?
Thank you for doing this, because, and you know better, because you've been on it before.
Yes.
But it's, it's an important job.
Rubbing in.
And we don't have a lot of business that's controversial before that board right now, but it is, it is important, an important way of maintaining professional standards.
Yeah.
For the community, so.
And as a retired principal, one of the things that I feel that was one of my strengths was being able to listen with an open mind, then do whatever needs to be done.
I served on that board years ago and was chairman of that board, and we've had many things before that board over the years, not lately, but it's important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. Maintenant, j'en enseigne le français à Lordville. Go Tigers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all.
Merci beaucoup.
Item 6B.
Resolution 22-19, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a certificate of substantial completion from Planet Reset Incorporated for the District One Santiago Park Improvements Project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Broussard and a second by Councilwoman Marquardt. Do we have any discussion on this item?
Do we have a picture of the improvements?
No. And we did talk about, I need to start doing that, but no, I don't. You didn't bring one, huh?
I have it on my phone, I think.
Can we plug it in?
I have it online.
I don't have.
It's online?
Pictures online, yeah.
Okay.
I do need to start doing that. I will.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have it up there.
Yeah, no, and we talked about it, we did. I'll have to, and David and I talked about, you know, trying to remember to bring stuff, and so I'll get better at that.
Yeah. But it looks good. Everything came out very well. The kids have been enjoying it a whole bunch. There's always children in the park now, which is great. So it was a good little addition to our neighborhood, and that's about it.
Great. Thank you.
Had to have it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Been years.
Yes, sir.
Years. Park Street. My neighbor, it all back up, and then the park, our floor roared it, we're coming home, coming to work, coming to the meeting. Very great. Looks beautiful in there. Yours. We're glad to see. We're doing what all our parks, it's been a year, a lot of years. We haven't touched a lot in there, so we're glad that you can do what you did to what your promise was.
And this is just, you know, one of many projects that each council member got $100,000. We have, they're all starting to come to fruition, they're all, some are still in the works, but it's, it's just good to see, you know, how involved, because I know how involved every one of y'all are. So it's, it's a good little project. Thank you. Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. And more on the way. 6C.
Resolution 22-20, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a certificate of substantial completion from Planet Reset Incorporated for the District Five East First, East First Street Park Improvements Project.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
So I just have one question.
Sure.
Well, first, let me say, it's, the, the new equipment we put in the park is absolutely beautiful, the kids love it, it's a great addition to the park. I mean, the older kids are now having something else to play on, and we always had a lot of kids that played in that park, but now we have even more, so it's really exciting to see them really enjoy the new equipment. Do we know the real name of this park? Is it First Street or is it Hacker? Hacker. So I, I wanted to, because I thought it was First Street Park as well.
Yeah.
And then I talked to Heather one day, and she said, it's Hacker Street, so...
Heather always calls it Hacker, right?
The new sign is going to be going up next month as Hacker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you have always called it, you know, when I was a pro team, it was Hacker.
Right, so our resolution says First Street, so I just wanted to make that clear, that we're, we're actually using, I called it First Street, but she corrected me and told me it's Hacker.
Okay.
Yeah, I just realized that just now as I was looking down.
All right, and each park's getting a new sign, so we won't have this problem again.
We need them to show you. And unfortunately, I don't have a picture with me.
Yeah, yeah, well, like I said, I will, I'll bring those next time.
I lived in that block, I lived in that block, the Broussards, my dad and his family, developed that Broussard subdivision, and we donated
Okay.
the land for that park.
Oh, that's awesome.
So in a big way, we're glad we used it, and it's so pretty now.
Yeah, and we're gonna get the old equipment painted, and Heather's gonna have things tightened up, but I think the coolest thing about those little neighborhood parks is that if we can, you know, keep the environment around them, you know, really kind of nice, the houses and stuff, we can attract young families, because young people who have children want to be near the parks, so their kids can go out and play. So I hope we have more of those in our community and other places where they aren't, they aren't close to parks, just to, you know, throw something else at you.
Well, yeah, but we got more coming, so, you know we do, so that's a good thing, but, you know, I believe in parks, it's why we're pursuing the Ann Street Park, it's why we're doing little neighborhood parks, and I'm sure more will come up, the bus stop that we're talking about in Little Brooklyn, all those things just add another layer to our community, so it's important, but it is also important to back up and support the parks we have, and that's what we're all doing a good job of, and I thank y'all for that, for kind of getting the mission, because quality of life is economic development.
Yes.
Any of these little improvements, don't let anybody ever tell you, well, the park didn't pay for itself, or this and that, it does 10 times over in quality of life and opportunities for our citizens, and, you know, it's, it's economic development.
Right, it's what the young people want, they want amenities, so that's a cool amenity to have access to when you live in a community.
Definitely, definitely. Any other comments?
Miss Pat gonna make sure that park stay up.
Yes, she will.
She calls me by her thing that comes on there, yeah.
She does a good job. If no further discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you all. All right, 6D.
Resolution 22-21, approving supplemental intergovernmental agreement between sewer district number one of Iberia Parish and the city of New Iberia for engineering analysis and recommendations, procurement, and installation of a fluent plant water tank at Teet Bayou wastewater treatment plant.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalana, a second by, I think it was, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion or questions on this item?
So I do have a few questions.
Vince, come on up. Vince Palumbo, our wastewater director, there's 20 months left.
At your service.
Oh, no, he's counting the months?
20 months left.
20 and 29 days.
No attitude problems.
Oh, no, none at all, it's all good.
Does he have short-term disease yet? You know, you get short-term disease when you don't have that much time left.
No, we talk about some big projects.
Okay, so, um, our, sorry, Vince, okay, so as I was reading through this, one, obviously we only owe $102,000 of that money, the parish is going to pay the other half, but what I didn't understand was, the people that's going to be doing the work, are their fees included in this, this price? The analysis, the engineering analysis or something?
I think they were, yes, ma'am, what we estimated, right? They're, they're doing that project hourly.
Is that, because I didn't see where this was the one that was, they were doing it hourly, it looks like it was the other one, the, the lighting one? So am I confused?
No, there were some problems with the lighting one, that's going to be a fee curve, the, the, I say the lighting, the, the electrical improvements.
Okay.
M&amp;E engineer, and I think we addressed that further down, but
Yes.
this is, this is hourly, the engineer agreed to do it hourly, it's going to come out better for us, it's, it's pretty straightforward, we, we're replacing a piece of equipment with the same kind of equipment, they're putting together the bid documents, going to manage the project, construction management from, from that aspect of it.
So they're not doing the work, they're going to send it out for bid to get?
Right, they're going to put the plans and specs together, get them to us, put them on the internet, let the contractors get all that, so, yeah, we use them for that.
Okay.
So it's very, very little for them, actually, I did all the legwork on, on the equipment and gave it to them and said, hey, this is the way we want to go, we need y'all to just basically use your brains for plans and specs and, and help us out with that, so that's what this one is.
And this one is cheaper by doing it in the fee curve.
Absolutely.
And sometimes we do take advantage of the professionals we have allowing us to do that.
Okay, but this is the estimate for the, the actual project?
And, and the engineering, I'm pretty sure it's included in that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure I understood that.
I, I don't expect the engineering to be over four, $5,000 on this project.
Okay, excellent.
It's, it's nothing.
So when we do these intergovernmental agreements, who's, who actually owns the project? Do you own the project, or the parish owns the project? Who owns the project?
Okay, so this one's a little different, right? For, for the years going past, I used to manage these projects for both parties, right?
Okay.
There's a new executive director there, this is a pretty straightforward project, given my time constraints here, I said, hey, this would be a great project for you to take lead on, and we'll take the backseat and reimburse you guys if you want to do that,
and they agreed. Okay.
So, so in theory, the contract between three parties is very difficult, if at all feasible, we've learned in the past, so the contracts between two parties, but there will always be a provision in there for input from all parties, right?
Okay.
So, and, and if that answers your question in a roundabout way.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out who owns the project, because usually when you have two people, two groups, somebody's got to own it, otherwise you're going to have problems.
Correct, in this case, it'll be the sewer district, but we're, you know, we're putting up half, so we have some say-so legally, probably not so much, but on, on, behind the scenes, we'll, we'll get our two cents in, and it'll be heard.
And traditionally, as long as I've been here, you've run every, you've basically run every project.
Pretty much, pretty much.
Okay.
Pretty much.
Which I don't mind, because then one person's in charge, and
Right.
because you're right, you could end up, if somebody's not designated, I'm, I'm, I'm the lead dog on this, you can run into a lot of, you know, problems.
Lawsuits can, can, I mean, two owners saying two different things with one, it just, it's not clean.
It causes nothing but issues, right.
It does.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that, because it wasn't clear from what I was reading, like, I'm not sure if Vince is...
As you see, we have pictures.
Yeah, there's some pictures, I looked at it, that was...
Yeah, unfortunately, the inside of this tank is 40 years old, and it was just neglected all these years, so we had some problems, and, and before budgeting last year, we were trying to get all this information, and we thought we could get away with just cleaning the inside of this tank and the outside and recoating everything, but as they went in and started removing all of this scale, the welder said, there's no way, for me to fix this, it's going to cost as much as a new tank.
Okay.
So then the new tank was $70,000, so we're looking at, well, a new tank, do we want to use 40-year-old controls? No, we're going to upgrade the controls, right, so, to do it right.
Yeah.
So that's what happened here, we just thought we could get away with, with the $30,000 coating, cleaning and coating, but we couldn't.
Okay.
It's too far gone.
Okay.
Any further?
Yeah, that looks pretty bad.
How old is that tank?
About 40 years old.
40, yeah.
Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. And Vince, you might as well stay up there, next item's yours.
Yep.
Madam Clerk, 6C.
Resolution 22-22, approving contract for professional engineering services with M&amp;E Consulting for upgrades to electrical conduits and wires to aerators and lighting at Teet Bayou wastewater treatment plant.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalana, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So on this particular one, it said the construction cost of the project is $115,000.
Estimated, yes, ma'am.
And then it says that the fee percentage is calculated by the state of Louisiana, so do we know what that fee percentage is?
Yeah, it's, it's a sliding scale, the formula is a sliding scale, the lower the project, the lower the fee, the higher the project costs, the higher the fee, but that's what facilities planning, how, how they allow us to pay our consultants and contractors. So it's, it's established, it's accepted by the state, and that's basically what, what we're doing with this project.
Okay, but in this, in this particular project, I mean, so it's the cost, it says construction cost is 115, so plus engineering so...
Probably 10%, if I had to guess what that fee is gonna...
But it's plus 10%, 10% is not in there.
Right, that's correct.
That's what I'm trying to get at, with total cost, right.
It's plus 10%.
We, we won't know till the engineering's done and the bids go out.
Okay.
And, and then they'll get paid based on that final number, if we can afford it. Of course, this wasn't in the budget, this was something that failed as well this year.
Right, so this will come out of the general fund?
Yeah. It's just like all of our capital outlay projects, you remember recently, the person who's directing from facility planning up to one of my, up the architectural fee because we were below the state fee curves, I mean, they take that serious.
Right.
It was, you know, he spent $20,000 of our money that I wasn't planning on spending, but you have to adhere to those state fee curves in those instances.
Right, no, that makes sense.
Yes?
Excuse me, so, so DeeDee, now, now we know that, see on that road contract, we got a 5.3% of fee, engineering fee, and now the facility planning charges roughly 10%, it's a pretty good deal on the road.
Right, no, absolutely, yeah.
It can be great. I know 10% roughly with facility planning works around, and I saw, I was, I was really excited about the, when we approved the road at 5.3, I thought it was a really good deal. Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that's definitely good.
Yeah, let's not tell them. Any other discussion? And thank you all, I'd ask you all to please vote your machines. Appreciate it, thank you, Vince.
I have one little thing I can interject, DeeDee asked about supply, supply chain issues and the cost of stuff, it, it's bad, it's bad on our end, we, we have some motors, little small stuff, 15 horsepower motors, we got a quote from a vendor, a local vendor, and they said, oh, yeah, I can get you those in two days, well, we got one, the other one's six months out.
Oh, my goodness.
It's getting bad.
Yeah.
We, we have a pump at the main station on Amaldal that, that needs some repair. In 2016, the part was $20,000, and they just quoted us 40, so it's, it's, it's bad.
Wow.
You guys need to prepare for that, and it's probably going to get worse, so, anyway, that's, that's where we are with everything.
So that's a really good point, we got a lot of projects going on, do we have enough of a buffer to kind of handle some of these, these supply chain issues that are going to come our way?
We're going to take them one at a time, I, I feel we do, but things could get so crazy that we don't, and then we're, before we accept those bids, we might have to, you notice we rebid a few projects and got better prices, we might have to change the scope, we can always entertain value engineering, which you pick your low bidder, and then you go back and kind of look at what you can tweak, I am anticipating to have to do all of those things, I cannot believe, just looking in, you know, the private world of my construction company that my wife runs, just looking at what I'm facing on my projects, what every one of my department heads tells me, trying to procure this or find that, I, I do know that we are blessed to have as many projects as we have and the money we have, but it's going to be a constant thing, I think on every project coming, we will just have to back up and assess each one, and, you know, kind of play with the hand we're dealt, but I do anticipate many, many issues, I really do.
So do we, I mean, I, I know, like, some of the federal money, is there any way for them to, like, you know, take this into consideration, because maybe we won't even be able to start some projects because of supply chain issues, and I know we have deadlines and when we have to spend some of this money.
We do, we do.
So, I mean, anybody we can get to lobby for kind of extending deadlines if we run into these situations, so we don't have to send the money back or something?
Right, right, well, we'll scream if that happens, and, you know, like with the ARPA money, we do have deadlines, but the whole country got ARPA money, so I can't believe, you know, we're not isolated as only New Iberia having those issues, so I would think that everybody would be able to make a case to say, we need more time.
Right.
But I, I do anticipate, I mean, kind of, we're here to solve problems, that's kind of what we do, so we'll be solving a lot of problems, but I do, I do really think that along the way, you can't spend the millions of dollars that we are, the 12.5 on the road, the, the ARPA money's 9.4, the grants that we've gotten, we're talking about some other projects, you know, so...
Here's money.
Yeah, it's going to be a continuing thing, but, hey, we'll just hash it out right here and weed through it, that's all we can do.
All right, thanks, Vince.
Can't stop betraying, you know?
Yeah.
Cool, thank you, Vince.
Oh, I have one more question for Vince, can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am, you have one more question for Vince? Vince, she has one more question for you.
I'm sorry, I looked down, and I'm like, I forgot to ask that question, so Vince, the one thing that I had noticed in here was a change order process, like, when I read through this, I mean, it's like, they, they didn't make a provision for a change order process.
On this particular project?
Yeah.
Professional services, you're really not going to have change orders, that's more for construction, so we're going to go through the, the plans and specs, we're going to bid that out, we're going to get a low bidder, a successful bidder, and award another contract, that one will.
Okay, cool, all right.
But, but I don't like change orders, so...
Neither do I, that's why I'm asking.
On a large project, professional fees is by a percentage, so they just go up by that percentage.
Right.
In other words, if you have $100,000 change order that you approve, they're applying their percentage to.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So that's already at that rate and at that percentage, but don't, I don't want you to think that they don't go up, because if the project gets bigger, they come and hit you for that percentage.
Yeah, they, they get a percentage of that.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I hate change orders too.
Good discussion. Kevin. Madam Clerk, 7A.
Kevin Zaring, to present monthly budget report for November 1st, 2021, through November 30th, 2021, and December 31st, 2021.
Good.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a second, let my computer come back up. So in the past, when we do two months at a time, we just generally ask if y'all have questions on the first month, and if y'all don't, we move on to the second, otherwise we'll answer your question, so first month was month, was one month into the budget, so we should be at 8% of budget to date. Are we having questions?
I'll ask him a second one.
Any questions or comments?
So Kevin, on the demolition, is the 20...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't call on anybody yet, but it's okay, it's okay, go ahead.
So on the demolition, 22.99% in the first month, did this carry over from previous month, they just come to...
No, when we, when we started in the month of November, we hit it up.
Okay.
So those are expenses that we're hitting at one time, so I think that might have been about, pretty much, I think we, the list, we did at that time, so it might have been eight to 12 different demolitions.
So we just active that month?
Yes, sir.
All right, cool. Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, you had a question?
No, I, I'll wait till we get to the second month, because
Oh, okay.
the numbers are still pretty much the same.
No problem. Any other questions, comments?
All right, we'll move on to December. All right, so after, at the end of December, we're two months in, so we should be at approximately 17% of budget year to date. I'll go over in the total, if you have a question on the detail, you're welcome to ask. General fund, budget revenue is 27 million, we're at 4.5 million, putting us at 16.68% of budget expenses, budget 27.4, we are 3.8, putting us at 13.89% of our expenses.
So, I have a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, do I have the floor?
You can, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You do now.
Okay, so the clip oak pine building, it looks like we're at almost 32% in expenditures, it's, I know we've been working on that building, are, are we expecting it to continue at this rate, or is that going to slow down at some point?
It's just about done now. They actually did the substantial completion punch list, so.
Excellent.
This just hit at a time that it was in process. And then over the last, you know, since, since then, we have ramped it up and it is now basically finished. All we really have left is, we're waiting on it, but we've audited all the furnishings, the conference tables, the conference chairs, the stacking chairs, the lectern, some TVs. So we're waiting to do our part to trick it out so that we can actually start utilizing it. The chief's office and secretary's office and assistant chief on the other side, there was very little work in those areas, but they're complete and they're doing the same thing, ordering, you know, waiting on desk, waiting on stuff to come in. So it won't be long. We'll have a meeting center, training center for the whole city, and they'll have their offices, but it, it's almost done.
So we're not going to need the entire 194 that we budgeted?
No, you have to take in consideration, some of that is retainage.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also...
Some was furnishings, was allowances. I will be spending that, because some of it was the allowances in the project for the furnishings, for the TVs, for the IT equipment.
So also keep in mind, we're talking as of today, February 1st. These are the numbers as of the end of December.
Right.
So we incurred some of these costs in January.
Okay.
A lot of, and really, the contractor really ramped it up in January, which is a good thing. Late December and January, so that's...
Okay. All right. Cool.
Any other questions on the general fund? All right. We'll move on to Parks and Recreation. Budgeted revenue is 1.2 million. We're at 697, putting us at 58.06% of revenue. Expenses are 1.4, and actual is, expenses is 150, putting us at 10.38. The reason why your revenue is higher year to date is because in November, December, we post the revenue from the property tax. We record it all at once, and then at the end of the year, we adjust it for amounts that aren't collected or tax credit adjustment.
Okay.
Public Works, revenue of 1.8, actual revenue 879, leaving us at 49.7. Expenses are 2.5, actual is 400, putting us at 16.06%. That's the same explanation there. The revenue is coming from the property tax, so they received it all at once. Sales Tax Fund, revenue of 9.8, actual is 1.7, leaving us at 16.85. Expenses are 12.2, actual is 2 million, leaving us at 16.6. So we're where we should be. Public Safety, which is the tax fund, 3.8 million revenue. We're at 635, putting us at 16.9% on the revenue. Expenses are 3.8, actual is 324, leaving us at 16.58%, where we should be. Arpa Fund, revenue of 4.5, actual is 752, putting us at 16.84%. Revenue is 4.5, actual is 736, leaving us at 16.46. So we're where we should be on that one also. Section 8 vouchers, revenue of 1.4, actual is 212, leaving us at 15.29. Expenses are 1.4, actual expenses 242. Our expenses are at 17.28%. Waste Water Fund, before I go on this one, Waste Water Fund, yeah, well, I know he's going to do it.
He's already doing it back there.
I've got a question more.
Large portion of his revenue are going to be bonds and the receipts for the SRF, the DEQ loans. I did not adjust those numbers for the revenue or the expenses as of today. We, I was going to do that later on in the year. But overall, he's where, if you look, his revenue is at 6% of budget and his expenses are at about 4%. So his expenses are actually lower than his revenue rate. So. Do we have any questions for the month of December?
Any questions?
Next month I'll, or later on this month, I'll present January.
Thank you.
I do have one question. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I just remembered. Is the American Rescue money in here yet?
The American Rescue Plan is a separate, we created a separate fund and a separate organization, and we are not tracking that in here.
Okay.
And, and we haven't spent, okay, we are, just to give you an update, you know, Garden is still negotiating on the fire truck and, and working that through. And at the next meeting, Paul Island is beginning the work on the splash pad. So he's already started some stuff, and I've actually met with him and kind of did some preliminary selections. But those were the two projects that we, because of those calculated losses, we could get started on.
Right.
We are still waiting on a few other things to be able to start the rest of them that we had said probably wouldn't be till April or May. But that's all on a separate account, and that all will be, we'll have a, when that starts spending, we'll, I envision, we can have a separate report on that that just deals with that. But the auditors asked us to put that in a separate account, and because we have to be so accountable for those dollars, to track it separately.
Is that the same for the CARES Act money?
Yeah, now, the CARES Act money...
That's already been allotted, and that is factored into each individual's budgets.
Yeah. That was what we had left, you remember? We did that a while back, so that had already gone into the budgets, and most of it's been spent.
Most of it is a big spin, except for the amount that has been spoken for, for the building.
Right.
Like the Parks and Rec money hasn't been spent yet, right?
Of the CARES Act?
Put in a budget.
Uh, it's in her budget.
Yeah.
So whatever we put in, that was CARES Act, yeah. And I've been, and they've been doing a good job. If you look, they're, they're spending. They've got a lot of things, you know, that we didn't wait. Remember last year, they were very, and I appreciate that, but they were very cautious last year and kind of waited toward the end of the budget. And this time, we're, we're really kind of aggressively rolling. But any of the money, like the fire department still has a pretty good chunk of their CARES Act money, but Garden did put 20,000 to go toward the training center, because he'll use it. But he still has some left. The police still have a little left, but the building's going to burn up. They're big, they put up most of the money for that building, because they're going to have some officers in there.
Right.
So their money is going, you know, to, to finish that project.
The money for the CARES Act was really broken down into two, three different organizations. It was broken up between Police Department, Fire Department, and like, for instance, 100,000's at each of y'all. That's actually accounted under administration.
Okay.
The money that was allocated for downtown development, Hopkins Development, Park Development, is accounted for under administration.
Okay.
So those are still being tracked, but most of that has been spoken for and has been spent, as far as I'm aware of.
Mm-hmm.
And by the way, thank you for breaking out the parks so that we can see the expenditures for each park. I appreciate that. That's very helpful.
That's a work in process. But I do appreciate it.
Well, I, I did see that you did what we asked, and I just wanted to acknowledge and let you know that we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Good. Thank you, Kevin. All right, I'll move on to councilmen's remarks. Councilwoman Mark.
Evangeline Lilly has their registration that's open right now for baseball and softball. If you're interested in registering a child, you can go to their Facebook page and register online. Also, last week, we had a, a train stopped on the train tracks for about three hours. Does anyone know what actually happened? I hear there was some type of malfunction with the way it was working, but that's...
We're getting a report from Mr. Broussard.
Okay. Am I jumping ahead? Okay.
But you're carrying, you know?
This is a...
I was just a little alarmed by the fact that it was stopped that long and blocking so many different crossings.
You're not wrong.
That's not good for emergency situations. But okay, I'll let Mr. Broussard touch on that. I'm done.
Thank you.
Yeah, ma'am. February 1st, first, first day of Black History Month, I always want to acknowledge Black History Month, you know, which was founded in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson. It was Black History Week. It was founded on the second week of February, the same birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. It became a national holiday in 1976 by President Gerald Ford, and today we still celebrate it. The theme for Black History this month is Black Health and Wellness, encouraging African-Americans to, you know, take care of yourself, take better health, you know, do screenings as much as necessary, regular screenings and things of that sort of, you know, it's, it's just an honor to sit in this seat that was created in 1966, 1976, I'm sorry, excuse me, 1976, as a minority seat. And to sit in this seat today and represent this district is always an honor. Today, I, I think about Ms. Diggay Carrie, Ms. Clara Diggay Carrie, and as well as my Aunt Peggy, Peggy Girak, who was the first African-American woman to sit in this seat. And Ms. Diggay Carrie was the first African-American woman to sit on the Iber Parish School Board. And they just came to mind today, and I want to acknowledge them as history makers. As we know, Ms. Carrie went home early, at the end of last year. My Aunt Peggy, she's still kicking, doing well, doing well. I was with her yesterday, visiting with her. I also want to acknowledge, man, and I want to pay my respect and give my condolences to the Small family. Mr. George Small passed away, I think, on yesterday. He was an educator, you know, he, he, he helped us a lot in my community, man. I was under his tutelage for a little while. When I was in school, he was over at Adjustment Center, and I lived in Adjustments.
You adjusted.
And he kept, and he kept my mind, right? So his passing, for a short time, he, he was a father figure to me at, at Anderson Middle School, because it was strictly disciplined, and he will be missed. So my condolences is to his family. Thank you, ma'am. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Broussard.
I wish to report a recent railroad event on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2022. Between 4:30 PM and 7:45 PM, a railroad train broke down and blocked most of all railroad crossings in Iberia for over 3 hours and 15 minutes exactly. Every minute counts. If someone on the south side of the railroad track needs to reach a hospital, which both are on the north side of the railroad tracks, a railroad overpass would serve this safety The railroad is an important asset to the city of Iberia, Iberia Parish, state of Louisiana, and the nation with I-49 coming through in the future. An overpass idea was first proposed, Mr. Mayor, 20 years ago. We're both here. Mr. Vitter got the word that we were looking for some money to start an overpass in Iberia. Federal money, a million six he gave us, a million and 600,000 dollars for a start, it's only a start, to build this very important overpass. You have a little handout with three pages right now, State of Feasibility Study. A report by Finstermaker for the New Iberia Railroad Safety State Project Number 700-23-0218 and Federal Aid Project Number DE-2306-504, Iberia Parish, Louisiana, June of 2009. This federal study, $150,000 book was developed. Eight months it took to get this report. And indeed, it says we need an overpass after all that study. So this comprehensive report was prepared for the Louisiana Department of Highways and the Department of Transportation, United States of America, at a cost of $150,000. Included in this report is a section with pictures for an overpass to be built on Lewis Street, if possible. The New Iberia City Council has not sat idly on this project. I thank y'all. For the last 12 years, the mayor and the council have submitted to the state outlay request bill for an overpass. We keep it on every year. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this council, and the future councils, to keep it on till we can see if we can have one. Finally, we must become proactive and get this much needed overpass built. It is needed more than ever. We may need to say something in person. The fastest way is to get this important request through is by telephone, state of Louisiana contacts, and telephone number Governor Evans... Evan Evans, he almost back in the news. Still fighting for this overpass. Lieutenant Governor Nungesa, Chad Winchester, they got numbers right there, Simon Ordwala, I talk to all these people on a weekly basis. Jared Ray, Railroad Construction Manager, he's the main man that got his position just to build overpasses over railroad tracks in Louisiana. Sean Wilson, the director, not assistant, he was assistant 20 years ago, and he's a director now. So please, if y'all can, look at the pages, y'all got the cover page. And the mayor, I hope you have a book like this in the office somewhere.
Yes, sir.
If anybody wants to see it, please come read it. It's very important for the people. We're trying to fight for the citizens. And this wasn't my idea. When I started to become a, a city councilman, I asked my dad, should I run? Yeah, go run, get me an overpass and get to them hospitals. 25 years ago. I took it to heart real hard. That's where this idea come from, because he said, that's stupid, we can't get across to the hospitals. Why didn't build it on that side of the track, maybe? But in a big way, I said my piece, they have these pages. Oh, that pretty, 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 the last page. I've got the pretty, pretty overpass drawn up by that study on Lewis Street, two-way to get over. There's some controversy about why we can't do it and this and that. But in some time down the road, it might not be in my time, but at least we're going to keep it alive, that we might see it one day, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I know it costs a lot of money and the city put up, too, but it'll be years from now. But I please thank y'all. I want to thank y'all. I was surprised, Mr. Mayor, the other night, you remind, when you had the outlay request bill, it was on there. It stayed on there, and I hope it stays on there until we see something. So I hope I presented it right for the people, that we have a lot of, I have 30, 40 stories in my time in 20 years that people told me about babies born, people they have trouble with, that had trouble, chainsaws cutting their arm, they couldn't get across that track. I wish I wrote everyone down. But thank y'all for listening. I get emotional with this a little bit. I said, why you sit there for three hours looking at that elephant sitting right in front of you that's not moving? How you figured, you know, what's going to go on? Where the, where the gambling land's going to bring? The fire truck, Mr. Mayor, right off they move? One of your fire trucks was whooping around. You know, so it happens to everybody. It's just, who it happens to, look out. It might take, it might take somebody very important to get stuck at that track, and we might get an overpass. But that's my piece on it. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for putting up for me, for this, and I hope it stays on the, at least through the years to come, and we might see something.
Yes, sir. I'm going to interrupt, because you sell yourself short, Mr. Broussard. That $1.6 million that you got, from Vitter, it ended up, and you helped make that decision. It ended up funding part of the Armaco, which stopped flooding of houses in the West End. It also put arms and lights at the crossings that we have arms and lights. So, you know, you're an advocate for this, but that, because someone might ask what happened to the $1.6 million, but that's where it went. And it went to real community use, but we don't want to give up on this. I will continue to put it there, but I just want everybody to know, the money that you got, that you got from Vitter yourself, really did a lot of good in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Get a lot of pushing.
I know. Yes, sir.
David, thanks for your passion, but I, I think, you know, there's a distinct possibility, if it ever gets built, that you could see your name on that bridge.
Absolutely.
If I'm here, I'm going to ask for unanimous second.
Whether I'm here or not.
No, sincerely, if it ever does, I would definitely entertain that motion. But just on, on a second note, I don't know if you, all you guys and gals saw on the news that they were doing stories on communities and crime, and it showed Iberia crime rate down for the last past year. So I mean, that, that, you know, that's hats off to a community that's supporting their police department, and good jobs for our police officers, and I thought that was exciting news. Because I mean, every, you go around a community and, and you know, that's what they want to talk about crime, but we have something to hang our hat on. So, so thanks for everybody for the effort to continue to support that police department. Also, we do have a, a big event this Saturday, the Bayou Mardi Gras Parade. It's, it's going to be a huge event downtown. I think everybody's willing to go outside and participate in events, so let's come out and support our community and, and have a good time and a safe time.
Thank you. Councilman Lee Bev.
I don't have much to say tonight. I just want to remind everybody that COVID-19 is still around, and just be safe. Wear your mask if at all possible, social distance, and don't forget washing your hands and sanitizing, because most of the people who are getting really sick and dying are people that are unvaccinated. Yes, there's some breakthrough cases. I was a breakthrough case, but it wasn't as bad as it could have been. So if you haven't got your vaccination, please get vaccinated. It's not going to kill you, I promise you, pretty much. I mean, no more than anything else.
Pretty much.
No more than anything else, you know? You could walk outside and, and get killed.
It's always a risk.
So, yeah. So, but COVID-19 does, is a long-term illness sometimes, and we can prevent those kinds of things. So be smart, be safe, get vaccinated, and mask up. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Marie.
So I just have two things to kind of share with everyone. First thing is, is that the Downtown Neighborhood Association is having their meeting tomorrow at 6 o'clock, and this time, the meeting will not be at the Masonic, it will be at the Slimen. On February 12th, we're having a community day at the Masonic from 10 to 2, where we're going to be helping residents of the city apply for the weatherization grant, so that people who have older homes that maybe have insulation problems, air coming through your windows, problems in your bathrooms or stuff like that, you know, they will come in, they will assess what's going on, and they will send their crew out to fix those things, and it's at no charge to the residents. So we believe that before we actually get started with doing a lot of these repairs to homes and stuff, we need to use some of these governmental monies that are already out there and get some of these things fixed, and then we can come in and do the things that they can't do. So we're asking everybody to, you know, if you want to get, and you can be a homeowner or a renter, even if you're renting, you can get this done. You just need to talk to your landlord, get him to sign a paper, basically saying that they're not going to raise your rent for two years, and then that work can be done. Everything that's done actually enhances their, their, their property, so it adds to the value of the property, so hopefully you won't find a, a lot of landlords saying no to this. But we're asking you to come out, bring the paperwork. You can look on my Facebook page to get the flyer, and we, you know, published it in different places. We're going to be handing out some flyers, but please come out and get signed up for this because it's going to help you to lower your utility bills and hopefully also to make sure you guys stay warm in the winter and cool in the summer. That's what it's all about, it's just helping the community. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Marie.
I have none for tonight, thank you.
Okay, I just have one thing I'd like to talk about real quick. I found out yesterday that the $1 million from the ARPA money that we put up to go after more money for sewer and went through the state, well, we didn't get it. We got none, okay? So I have talked to our Baton Rouge delegation. That opportunity comes up again in a few months. They're going to give us a time when it is. I've asked them to, they actually, a couple of people from the state talked to our engineer this morning because I set up a call. And so we are figuring out, what do we need to do so that in the next application, we can leverage this million dollars, we had asked for $5 million. As you know, in Brooks District in Acadian Acres is where I have some, the largest amount of, you know, sewer issues and backups and things that I really, we have to get a handle on. We have a million dollars for a project in your district that bid today, and it bid 300 and something thousand dollars over the budget. So realizing that, you know, our first road program is all related, our first road program of 12-5 is underway and bids are coming. And we have some leeway that we should have enough to do that, and that's bonded and we're cool. We have the Pepperplex coming, and that's paid for by the EDD, so we're good. In November, as we had talked about, I'm starting to put that together to where I head to ask our voters, we'll put some of the money up that we have, because it's not our money, it's our citizens' money. We'll put it back into the roads and ask them to take an existing millage and then turn it into a road millage that'd be dedicated to the roads. So if that happens, that's paid for by that millage. So what's our next target? It's sewer. So knowing that we have some issues, and you don't have the only issue in town, but you have one that's a huge issue and a big expense to reroute all that sewer to the sewer plant and fix that for your district and some other areas along the way. So I talked to Jason Akers today, and I'll just, you know, we'll wait a few months, not spend the million dollars, and hopefully we can leverage that money. Vince's money that he's already gotten from the state, that's a million dollars. Well, we have a decision to make. Do I award that project and we come up with more money? Do we rebid that project? Or do I combine that million dollars, because it's in the same area, with the million dollars we have from the ARPA money, and then go for an SRS loan, which we have one from 2013 and we have one from 2018, but it's at like 0.9 percent. And I checked today and the rate is still 0.9 percent interest. So knowing that we, you know, are navigating, this is the typical, it means what I do all day long, I'm not giving up on that, and I'm looking at whatever options I can do to get that project going because that's something that has been the most prevalent sewer problem since I've been the mayor. We've had other issues in the past, and we've had issues along the way, but that is one that's just been a hot button. So I'm researching, but I'd like y'all to know what's going on, so we'll decide. Vince and I have a meeting with the engineer to try to figure out if we're going to award that project, and then I would come back to y'all for the additional funds because we only have a million dollars. Then with the other money, I would like to hold that. Both state rep and the senator are communicating with me and figuring out when the next round of Ask would be, so I can see if we can leverage that as a match to get more money. But I just didn't want anybody to hear about that and think, oh, well, they're just going to say they don't have the money. Well, that's not the case, I don't give up that easy, and neither do any of y'all. So now I'm looking at the SRF loan program because it's very, very low interest, it's fixed interest, and at 0.95 percent. Well, if I know my roads are covered for now, and my future roads would be up to us and the voters together, and the Pepperplex is covered, well, that's my next target. So I just kind of like to let you know that, kind of how I'm researching it because it was a little bit of a setback. I did anticipate that I thought we would have gotten some money, maybe we wouldn't have gotten the $5 million we asked for, but that we would have gotten some funds. So anyway, I'm not giving up on that, that's kind of my big thing and my latest thing that I'm working on, but I wanted y'all to know that because we did that job today, and that was, you know, a setback to here on Friday afternoon that I wasn't, we, as a city, weren't getting any money, and then for those bids to come in higher today. So that's the kind of complications that we are going to face, you know, from here on out. And it's because we're trying to do so much. You know, it's very easy, if you don't do a whole lot, you don't have a lot of problems. The more you do, the more challenges, you know, await us. But hang in there and we'll figure it out together like we always do. Other than that, the next council meeting is February 15th. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.